But you guys got a heavy body up as well, right? There was 125.
I'm gonna call the meeting order for the workshop.
Is it Scott with ADA Site Compliance?
We've got Scott with ADA Site Compliance on the phone. I'm gonna call the whole and do the pledge and then we will start the ADA portion of the workshop. Got our attorney, Anthony Pierce here, Supervisor Tinkles here, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Chris Schumaker, and Stephen Green from InfoMark. I started to say, "Yes, sir." And if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
National Agent Stu White of the United States of America. The word is in the book which stands: One Nation, Under God, They're Invisible with Liberty, Justice, and Honor.
Mrs. Feinberg, can I make, can I say something? I've had complaints that people cannot hear our attorney and, Chris, that they're not talking loud enough.
Okay.
Okay, so, just so that they could speak louder.
My wife would disagree with that, but I wouldn't.
I'm just, I'm just...
So, Scott, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you guys recall back a few org meetings ago, we had brought up their proposal for ADA Site Compliance, you basically, they, and then things, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but they basically have come out this dummy-down website, it's kind of WordPress template, they take everything over, put it down, make it all compliant, it's kind of a package deal, and then there's just annual kind of maintenance fee. So, basically, I know you guys had maybe some questions for them or just wanted to talk to Scott, and Scott, you can maybe briefly go over a couple of things. And then one of the websites that they just recently completed, Cypress Preserve CDD, that's on the screen, and so you can kind of see the links up top and the pages and how they have the documents laid out, so. Scott, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. And so that website that you're looking at, that's not exactly how your website would have to look. There's some flexibility in terms of design elements, but we did want you to see, you know, what a basic website looks like, and it's our information that was migrated from, you know, now their old site into the new compliant and accessible theme that we've built. And what that does is it dramatically lowers the cost to your district of auditing and remediating the existing website, because most of the heavy lifting is the theme itself. So, it's the, where you see the buttons and the way that everything's set up, that's the theme, and that's probably about 80% of the auditing and remediation work that would have to be done on your current site. So, if we can eliminate all of that by just migrating all of your current content to our theme that's already been made accessible and compliant, obviously, the costs then go significantly down. So, where you see the cost of year one for the migration and doing all of the auditing and remediation work on our end is $4,900. That would likely be, to audit, would be more than that, just the auditing side and the remediation would then have to be added on, but it would certainly be, you know, I would guess in the $10,000 area to keep the current site, if you wanted us to audit and remediate that site. And then there'd be ongoing costs to monitor the site as the standards change to continually update that site would be certainly more than the $1,800 annually that we would begin to charge after year one.
Questions? Go ahead.
Just, just looking at this that's in front of us on this Cypress Grove or whatever, or Cypress Preserve, I don't see anything that jumps out to me that's any different than what we have right now. What am I missing?
Perfect. Good. That's how you're supposed to see it. Everything is done in the code, so you don't see it, it's behind the scenes. So, all of the lawsuits are, I shouldn't say all, but the vast majority of lawsuits that are filed are filed by a blind plaintiff who says that they cannot use the website with their screen reader software, software that reads a website to them. That is all, or for the most part, that's in the code. You don't see it. So, for instance, if you look at the buttons and pictures, those by standards have to have tags on them. It's in the code. You don't see it, but it has to have, they have to have proper tags. And so, again, it's all behind the scenes. So, our goal is to make sure that we're maintaining to the best of our ability to make sure that you are staying compliant and accessible, the look and feel of your website.
Hey, Scott, this is Doug, Doug Banks. I think it'll be important maybe for you to spend just a minute and talk about two things. One, what type of accessibility issues that this new design will adhere to? And I think that's important, because if we look at our community and the types of either disabilities or accessibility issues that we may encounter, how this new design will benefit them? And also, from the WCAG standard, if you can give us an idea of kind of where we're at, are we, you know, is it in line with, like, level one, or 1.0, or 2.0, or is it somewhere in between? I think that would help the board, educate them a little bit on what we're trying to address here, because I think that brought up a really good point, that it may not be visible. And part of the accessibility design is intended on the back end, whether you can tab through it or use a screen reader. So, can you spend a minute or two and just address those two items?
Sure, sure. And I think, you know, that they're somewhat similar, right? In terms of the standards and maintaining the website, maintaining compliance and accessibility. So, the WCC standards, web content accessibility guidelines, are the recognized standards, you know, more or less worldwide, there are some regions that have their own standards, but they're very similar. And what they do is, there's a group called the W3C that helps to continually update the WCC standards. And so, the newest standard just rolled out in June, which is 2.1, and that's what we test to. We're testing to the current standard so that we make sure that we don't have to circle back at a later date and say, "Hey, you know, we only tested to 2.0, that was our agreement, now we need to do 2.1, and you owe us some more money for that." No, that doesn't make sense, it's unfair to you. So, we're already testing to the 2.1 standards. It will be our job to continually update the website, and that's where the annual fee, or part of the annual fee comes in, is for us to continually update the website. So, in other words, if our agreement had been signed in May, and at the time, there was only 2.0, once 2.1 rolled out, we wouldn't have come to you and said, "Well, now we need to do this, you know, let's discuss it, and then we need to figure out how to be compensated for it." No, it's our job to make sure that we're keeping up with the standards. So, that's all part of what we're doing. And, you know, I'm happy to go into the detail around the standards and how everything works, and, you know, again, why we can make the website look substantially similar to the current website, if you'd like, I mean, it's, you know, we may go down a bit of a rabbit hole, you know, and that's...
Yeah, and I don't think you need to go to that detail. I think it was just important to kind of call out the standard. And typically, the, some of the mitigation for the design, in your opinion, for our site would be geared more towards visually impaired, and there's varying degrees of that. Anything else that I think would be important for us to know? You know, use a screen reader, and if people don't know what that is, it's a device that basically will read the text for you. You can use, if you're not using a mouse, you can tab through, so you can just hit your tab button and use your keyboard to navigate some websites literally. You just get stuck in a dropdown, or something happens, and you can't navigate through it if you don't have a mouse or something like that. But any other examples that it would be important, just off the top of your head? Because I think it's important for us to be able to translate what we're doing and how, it's not only a standard that we, you know, we have to do, but what's the benefit to, you know, to our residents, so we can communicate that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, you certainly have residents with disabilities. You may not recognize all of those, and, you know, and I always, you know, ask the question to people, you know, "When's the last time that you saw, you know, a blind person just out and about?" And most people say, "Gosh, I can't even remember." And there's a large percentage of the population that's blind or severely sight impaired, but unfortunately, they're home now. So, making your website compliant helps them. It also helps people with hearing impairments or are deaf. If you have videos on the website, or you want to put videos on the website to make sure that they're captioned properly and that there's proper audio descriptions on the website, the PDFs are, you know, a major concern, and that's going to be an ongoing concern, and we'll have to work together on, you know, A, you know, what can you remove from the website so that you're not paying to remediate those docs, and what has to be there by law, and remediating all of those documents. Also, people who are physically impaired, who can't use a mouse, have to have the ability to use only a keyboard and keyboard combinations to navigate a website. There's hundreds of keyboard combinations that will allow someone to navigate a website, and so we need to make sure that we audit and remediate to allow them to do that. So, and also, for blind people or severely sight impaired people, they can't use a mouse because they can't see the cursor on the screen, so they use keyboard combinations as well.
And just one, one last thing, if anyone objects. Scott, in your opinion, the PDF issue is, it's not only a concern for us, it's been a concern with a lot of companies who publish statements and a lot of documents. Is it, could it be part of the solution, or whether it's a phase approach or just something as an interim, where we can continue to house PDFs, but streamline the process? So, if they're, if we don't have a, you know, an elegant solution through the website that we can create a process that we can streamline the requests for documentation, for staff? Because the documents is really something that's, I think, in my opinion, has been very important to us, to have information readily accessible. It also takes some of the burden off staff to have to fill out requests. But have you seen other solutions? You know, what is a bridge between what we have today, which is just straight-up PDFs, and a longer-term solution in being able to make PDFs or documents available without going full-scale conversion?
It's a difficult one, and it's difficult because of the plaintiffs and plaintiffs' attorneys. If they're looking to get you, they're going to get you on the PDF, if you don't fully remediate those docs, and if you don't keep those docs fully remediated moving forward and ensuring that they are accessible documents that, you know, can be, that can be viewed, it's not really the right word, but with the screen readers. So, we need to make sure that we're being proactive in the approach. One of the things that we can do and that we highly recommend is to take any documents that you have templates for and remediate those templates. Then you're starting from a good spot, from an accessible spot. Not to say that you can't populate that document with information and break it. For instance, you know, adding a picture into the document and not properly putting a tag on it will break it, but at least you're starting in a much better spot. That will also lower the cost for us to remediate the documents. So, where you see a cost of $2.90 per page, if you have us remediate the templates, then we'll come back with new pricing on the ongoing work. Unfortunately, you can't add templates for everything that's submitted, but the more that you can, the better off you're going to be. So, you know, for instance, if you have vendors that are submitting invoices to you, and those need to be posted, then you can force their hand and say, "If you want to do business with us, here's how you have to submit your invoices to us." And that would be a remediated document that you provide to them that they can't break, that they're forced to use a certain font style. That's one of the things, that's one of the standards. You know, you have certain font styles, and they can't change the color contrast ratios, so they can't break it, in other words. But that's something that the district and everybody that's involved with the process is really going to have to buy into and make sure that everybody's adhering to it.
What if we had, and I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but if, our meeting book sometimes contains images and, as exhibits, if we pulled those out and basically had two, two sources of information? One is the agenda, which could be in a different format, and then any images would be exhibits housed, you know, separately. Would that help?
You know, the images and adhering to the standards with images, it's actually pretty basic. You know, so for, for instance, if you have an image of maybe a piece of equipment that's going to be bought for the community...
Or a map, or something like that?
Or a map. Maps can be a little more difficult, so that's, maps can be a bit more difficult, but let's say it is a map, and it's an indication of where something's going to go. If you put a tag in there with a description, so if you had to describe that to somebody audibly without the picture, and say, "Well, here's where it's going. It's going, you know, by, on the corner of this street and this street, and, you know, that's where the park's located, and here, and it's going next to this other item," that would be your tag. You would put a tag on that item. So, no worries about pictures, those are actually pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. By, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I understand that we're trying to become commensurate with a federal law that's been in existence for 25 years. Is that so?
It's, it's the ADA, right? There's no true law on the books around website compliance per se, but they refer back to the ADA and the spirit of it.
And it's been 25 years since Bob Dole got that passed.
1990.
How is it that here we are at the end of 2018, before the lawyers or the blind and partially sighted people found out that something needed to be done?
They always knew, right? So, people with disabilities, of course, always had difficulties navigating websites, and what should make their lives and their, you know, their ability to navigate life much easier, you know, just as a, for instance, you know, ordering from Amazon should make their lives a lot easier. If you're blind, to have to go to the store and pick up an item is very difficult, they can't just hop in their car, but they can jump on a website and order items. So, the people with disabilities have always known that this is an issue, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be negative towards plaintiffs' attorneys, because they are driving positive change, but they're the ones that are really driving this. It's not the plaintiffs themselves, it's the plaintiffs' attorneys that have gotten a hold of this. It's easy for them, it's easy to file these lawsuits, it's, they all settle, you know, it's easy for them to make a buck, and that's what's really driving this. That's what's driving the need, and even for, you know, your own CDD, it's, there were 20-some CDDs that got sued. And so, that now raises awareness and the need to do this, and I know that it's a bit of a burden, the process can be a little bit confusing. The positives in all of it is that there are people that are going to be helped, and there are people that are going to really appreciate the fact that this is being done, it has to be done. But there are people that are going to appreciate it, people that currently reside there, people that want to move there, that are going to go on the website. So, know that there's a lot of good that's coming out of this.
You mentioned Amazon. I'm assuming that Amazon is in compliance with the law, that, that direction?
They're working towards it, and they're doing a very good job. And, you know, not that I want to go too far down the path of, you know, telling you some of the history of what's, you know, making these changes, but Target's the really well-recognized lawsuit that took place, and they settled for $6 million, and there was another $4 million, almost $4 million on top of it as part of the fees, and now they have a full team of people that only work on the compliance of their website. So, Target's really done an unbelievable job, only driven by litigation. But, you know, that's, that to me is really the standard on both sides.
I mean, Bill, we were, when I was at Bank of America, we were, we had pending litigation from 2010 to 2013, so many, it goes back even during that time period.
It took them a while to get the CDD.
Well, you know, where I'm, where I'm headed is, if this is a nationwide issue, why is it that we can't just piggyback on some of the improvements, changes that big companies like Target and/or Amazon have made, instead of trying to do all of this on an individual basis ourselves?
It's all coding, though. I mean, each webpage, it's the backend code. So, if we were all using a standard template for our websites, then we could easily go in and make universal changes. But websites are, they're all configured differently, they have different information that's exposed. So, the core framework for what Scott is doing and other ADA, you know, coders, is the same principle, the same kind of things you have to do. You have to be able to tab through, you have screen readers and alt tags and all that kind of stuff. But the actual makeup of the webpages are a little different. So, how you fix it is unilateral in some degree, but the effort that it takes to get there is, is not always the same. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
And by the way, Don, we are, you know, essentially piggybacking on, on what we're doing for CDDs in general. If we had to come in and create a, an accessible and compliant theme just for your CDD, you're talking, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to do that. But because we're working with so many CDDs, you know, it's 150, probably by the end of the year, it's going to be 250 to 300, as people continue to migrate their sites to this compliant theme. So, you are benefiting from that, just from a huge cost save.
You're probably going to tell me it's immaterial, but does anybody have an idea as to how many blind and partially sighted individuals access our website?
My guess would be very few, but all that it takes is one plaintiff, or one plaintiff attorney, and they file, you know, dozens of lawsuits against CDDs and thousands of lawsuits against, you know, businesses and public entities.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein, for the information you gave us, I really do appreciate it. My question is, you said that they're going to use the keyboard numbers to get into the account. How would they get those numbers to get into the account? If I had to tell someone how to do it, how would I do it?
I'm not fully understanding the question, so is that around keyboard combinations?
Right. How would they get into the site? How would somebody get into the site who's blind? And how...
So, anybody that accesses the website, so they have the domain name, and they go to the website, or they do a search, and they find the website. From there, their navigation of the website, where you use a mouse to navigate a website, they use keyboard combinations. Again, there's hundreds of those, and so if you use any keyboard combinations, it's real common to use one to save a document or to print a document, there's hundreds of keyboard combinations to do anything that you could think of. So, if you're using your mouse to go to a form, and you click into the form, and you're going to put your name in that form, well, a blind person is using a screen reader software, and it's actually going to, with proper tagging, it's going to say to them, "Form, enter first name." And so, they know to enter their first name. Now, to go to the next box, maybe to put in, you know, maybe it says first name, last name. To go to the last name, they're going to use their keyboard to do that. That may be as simple as them hitting the tab key, so it's not a true keyboard combination, but they're utilizing their keyboard to navigate through the website.
But once they get to our website, how would they, how would they go about getting onto the specific things? Is there a certain code they have to put in with their keyboard?
No, no, it'll just, it'll pick up. They're using a screen reader, which is a backend software that they already have. So, then it'll, it'll basically walk you through where to go. There's, there's not, we don't, we don't have any passwords or anything to, nothing to get in. It'll be the same as anyone else, however, how they navigate through it would be a little different.
I didn't know if there was something special with our, our... Thank you. That's it.
I just wanted to comment that I'm sure none of you are old enough to remember DOS, which is how we used to manage computers before we had a mouse.
I've seen pictures.
Assembler 360.
This whole thing reminds me of, going back to DOS.
Remember the year 2K? The year 2000?
I did not have any questions. Did anybody else have any other questions they wanted?
Couple of them. One, what is the total price to do this? And the second one is, after we get this done, are you guaranteeing us that we're exempt from lawsuits?
What a question.
So, first, first one is, year one, which is most of the heavy lifting on our end, is $4,900 to create the new website, to migrate it, to audit it. So, there's still auditing and remediation that has to be done of your content, everything of a print over. So, that will make your website compliant and accessible. And then annually, after year one, is $1,800, and that's to maintain compliance. It's also for consulting, so let's say, you know, the map was brought up earlier, so let's say that you want to add a map to the website, and you're unsure whether or not putting that map on is going to essentially break it, it's not going to be compliant. Then you could just call us or email us. So, it's, it's essentially unlimited consulting hours, you know, with the caveat that, you know, if somebody's calling us every day and taking hours of our time, you know, then we may have to change that. But that just doesn't happen, right? It's usually quick, easy questions, and it prevents your team who is managing the website or adding content to the website from going to a search engine, going to Google, and spending hours to try and get answers, when they can just call or email us. So, it saves time, saves money, saves frustration, so that's how the financial side of it works. In terms of guarantees, unfortunately, there's no guarantees. Anybody can sue anyone for anything. Doesn't mean that they're right, but it obviously happens every day, and all our stories, unfortunately, some of us have been part of lawsuits that were completely unfair. But we can look at your website and say, "You're essentially 100% compliant, 100% is kind of unrealistic in this, it's not really necessarily achievable, but you are substantially compliant and accessible, and website's in great shape, and a plaintiff's attorney can still file a lawsuit, you know, if it happens." Unfortunately, our goal on this, of course, is to make it accessible. Also, for plaintiffs' attorneys to file lawsuits, you know, it costs them money, it takes time. This is a really easy game for them. You know, I always like to say that 999 out of 1,000 websites are not compliant, and most of the people that are managing those websites have never even heard of website compliance. So, as a plaintiff or plaintiff's attorney, they're going to land on your website, and they're going to see, A, you're working with an expert, and B, the website's in great shape. It's really, it's, it's a great website, and they're just going to move on to the next person. Why are they going to take their time to come after you? Because you can take them, or you can fight them, you can see it all the way through. Financially, it usually doesn't make sense, that's why everything seems to settle. But, again, it's an easy game for them. There's tens of millions, if not 100-plus million, websites that are not compliant. They're just going to move on to the next one.
To the 99.9%, if not greater, of the non-impaired ADA residents of this community that are picking up the tab for this, what are they going to see different on the new website, or what are they going to lose on the new website as a result of this change?
They're likely not to lose anything. So, that's always our goal, is to make everything that we can compliant. There are some items at times that aren't compliant, and it's just, it's, we can't make them compliant, the starting point, so that, that piece, it's just, you can't make it compliant, it's just not possible.
Such as? Such as?
Calendars often are very difficult to make compliant. With that being said, we have a lot of compliance pieces and plugins that we can usually replace it with. So, we, the person managing your website will have a relationship with our tech team, and they may go to them and say, "Here's the calendar that we want to use. It's not identical to your calendar, but it's almost the same, and it's going to function exactly what you're looking for." And they're going to approve it. I mean, it's very rare that somebody says, "No, that just doesn't work for us, and we're going to take the risk. We want to use our calendar, we're not willing to move." And, you know, our, our comment is, "All right, we're just letting you know that is a risk." If a plaintiff lands on your website and they go to that calendar, if it's not compliant, they could sue you for that.
So, things like prior meeting minutes, rules, regulations, resolutions, all those other documents that are historical, that are used quite frequently by the residents, will be available when this is done?
All of those documents have to be remediated, and that's another, that's a separate, so that's a separate part of the proposal that was sent, is to remediate the documents. We weren't actually able to put a price on remediating the documents, because we just don't know what's there. Our suggestion has been to, you know, definitely take down what you can, take everything down that legally doesn't have to be there, unless you want to spend the money. And we do have some clients, you know, especially very large, Fortune 50... And we do have some clients, especially very large Fortune 500 companies, money isn't an issue and they just, they're going to spend whatever they need to spend and they want to keep their website exactly what it looks like and they'll pay us. So the calendar, for instance, yes, we can make the calendar work. It may take us 100 hours to get their calendar to work and that's okay. Fill us for it. It doesn't matter. So the PDFs are a bit of a separate thing here that we need to all figure out together exactly how many pages are there and are we going to remediate your templates to make things easier? So that's a little bit different than the normal pricing per page, but on an ongoing basis, it's going to save you a lot of money if you're able to do that.
I mean, the biggest thing that we have to do is just, again, we have to determine what our risk tolerance is.
Yeah, and again, as part of that, I think, following up with that question, Scott, with regards to the PDFs, that's where the cost is. I think you indicated a remediation cost per page is $2.90 for each PDF page. So if there are minutes going back to 2000 and each one of those sets of minutes is in a PDF format, which I believe that's what they currently are on the website, to keep all those minutes on the website, each one of those pages of those minutes will need to be converted and remediated at that cost. Is that correct?
The suggestion would be take down what you can, right? So there's actual laws and standards for how long you have to keep your documents. So you don't have to keep all of those. And I don't remember. I think it's 12 months on that.
The question was the cost.
Scott, we recognize that. For example, minutes do not even have to be posted at all. Budgets do and other reports have to be and agendas for up to a year along with their documents. There's a whole list of items, but the question is, and that gets back to Mr. Tinkelman's question, what do the people lose? What do the residents lose? The ability would be to access online those documents that it's decided not to remediate and pass back on the website.
So if you remediate one, you remediate all?
No.
So why couldn't we have one for residents who aren't impaired and one for residents who are?
You mean a website?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you either, like I say, you either determine what your risk tolerance is and you're going to house some information. The PDF, what's challenging is it reads as an image. So a screen reader, for example, can't read it. There's nothing to read. It's basically like a blank sheet of paper. And if you have a PDF and you want to convert it, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's basically like what an alt tag is, is it's basically the descriptor on the backside. Like if you were to flip it over, it would tell you what that picture is. So a PDF, they would basically have to transcribe the document and put it in the backend. And I could be inaccurate. I was just trying to provide some kind of high-level visual, but what does he determine?
On PDFs, the example that I like to use is the PDFs have to be structured in the proper order. So someone that can't see it as they tap through it or they're using their screen reader software, that it flows through the document. So imagine that you went on to look at a document, you pull up that PDF and now your screen just starts jumping all over the place. So you're trying to read left to right, top to bottom. This is how we usually do it. And now it's going from the upper left, down to page 47 in the middle, back up to page 13 at the top right. And so proper ordering of the document would be us going in, remediating that document to make sure that it flows properly, left to right, top to bottom.
And I understand your concerns, but I also don't imagine that we've got that many residents that are going to look for minutes from 2010. It's not going to be that common. And if they want a particular meeting minutes, then they can make a formal request and they can be provided of that way.
We could easily have Mike or staff, if we have Google Analytics set up for certain things on our site, we might be able to go in and see how many times a document was clicked over the past, well, since we redesigned it, because I'm sure we don't have the history for that, but that could be a way for us to say, "We're going to house some documents, but others just due to frequency of use." But anyway, we got to...
Just one more question if I may.
Sure.
Scott, will you be preparing written reports, audit reports, showing both computer audits and the manual audits that you all perform and providing them to the staff so that the board has them available if necessary?
We can, sure. That's part of the fee that you're paying to us is to make the proper changes to the website to keep it compliant and accessible. So we're trying to minimize the amount of time and effort and energy that your team is putting into this. That's what you're paying us to do, but of course, we'll share any information that you'd like.
I mean, to be honest, for five grand to at least get us to that next level is remarkably cheap, based on my experience.
Dirt cheap.
I agree. Do you have any questions?
Am I the only one that thinks that we ought to just wait and see if we get sued? How long we can postpone anything before we start spending the public's money?
Personally, the investment of five grand, we would have to, we'd burn that equipment through Tony.
My two cents perspective, two things. One is, assuming forsaken discussion, which it probably does, assuming your current insurance coverage provides for the defense of this type of litigation, there's typically deductible. The deductible for the other districts was $2,500. So at a minimum, there's $2,500 that'd be paid towards the defense counsel who are very, there's a law firm that does a lot of them and they're very good. I've worked with them for three other districts. Number one. Number two, my understanding is, from some of the webinars, and Mike may want to pitch in, and Chris, is that on a go-forward basis, the insurance carriers may require, as a condition of renewing coverage or providing coverage of this type, that you maintain your website compliance. And it's kind of like when you have your house, your carrier wants to make sure that you're making your improvements according to code. They're not going to cover anything that's not built according to code or not according to permits.
You better have smoke detectors.
And that's what I've heard may be happening down as we go forward. So when you all go to renew policies, there may be a requirement to have website compliance processes in effect. So that's...
Look, but you just keep saying, "May, may happen, may happen, may happen." You don't know that it is going to happen or that it has happened. In the meantime, we're charged with spending the public's money.
I think the risk is greater, you'd be spending more money by not engaging in this activity because, again, Ms. Defoe was one, she's filed 200 to date in lawsuits.
What's that?
Ms. Defoe, the one who filed against us and a bunch of others, is now going after private entities. I think she's up to 200 lawsuits. And that's one plaintiff. There's another, there are a couple others. Anybody in the country can file arguably. They can try to, because they're saying our site's not website compliant. So there's a huge pool of potential plaintiffs and arguably each one of them could require that we pay their attorneys fees as a resolution of the matter. That's...
No, that wouldn't happen. They could solidate those cases.
No, so they're individual. I mean, we've got, as I understand it from the webinar that I attended, there's a large, there's a nice group of plaintiffs' counsel on the East Coast that are enjoying the heck out of this. Is that a fair statement, Scott?
Yeah, and it's unbelievable how many new plaintiff's attorneys are popping up. So what we were seeing years back, it was really three main firms that were filing, the bulk of them. And literally every day, we see a new name that we don't recognize or multiple new names that we don't recognize. The cot be cat lawsuits are absolutely occurring. We have multiple customers that have been sued multiple times and they were sued, and then came to us. They weren't with us after the first suit. One tried to use internal resources, one tried to use their website developer. They're not experts in website compliance. They got sued a second time. Also, the precedence has been set by the courts recently in the Hooters case and the Dunkin' Donuts case that allowed second lawsuits to come in even after they had settled the first one. So this isn't going away. This is just getting ramped up. We're real early in this. I really think that when we look 36 months out, the number of lawsuits that are going to be filed, they're probably going to 10x where they are now. And we've already seen that, though. If you look five years ago, there were not many. There were dozens. And you're looking now at thousands and thousands and that doesn't take into account demand letters and other threats that are being imposed against businesses and entities.
I think we had like a shot across the bow and we got lucky and we woke up and now we're trying to do our due diligence so it doesn't cost the community a lot of money.
Multiple species of sharks looking for blood.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Scott, so I will thank you for calling in and participating in our workshop and letting us ask you questions and I will say goodbye.
All right, my pleasure. If you need anything, just reach out. Thank you so much. I'll be back.
Anything else that you want to add, Mike?
It was just for you guys to talk to him and kind of get some background on it, so.
Are you going to be bringing something forward at another meeting for us to approve?
Yeah, I can get a formal proposal from, that is separate from that one for the amount and also for if we want to do, have staff do the train, where at first, how much it would cost for the PDF. And that, we'll try to have at the next board meeting. We have the one in December and you guys can discuss.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to 1B. Oh, one thing that I did forget to ask everyone is if you have a phone, please turn it to silent. I did forget to send that in there. Chris?
Yes, some introductions. Today, we were going to talk about a number of capital improvement projects and related projects. And I put a handout on each of the board members' desks, which was the original memo and then I had some staff comments and bold notes just where these are within our capital improvements and for our budget. And we're going to look at some of these projects and look at options for financing them. And there's resources today. Russ Wire is here. And Russ, of course, is working on the district's methodology study and familiar with different aspects of financing, how it impacts the assessments and just general questions, or he may have some comments on it. Also today, we have Corbett Aldy with us from Community Guarding Resources. And Corbett's been working for the district with the Lake Bank Restoration Program on SRF loan compliance. Davis Bacon and providing some very valuable assistance to us on submission of documents to SRF and that whole process. And Steve Blum, of course, is here. And in attendance, Joe DeCervo is also here. I just wanted to recognize Joe. And with that, the list of projects was really generated by Supervisor Tinkelman and some of the ideas he had for financing. And I guess I would turn it over to him to kind of go through his list and the way he looks and approach for it.
Well, thanks, Chris. I think it needs to be pointed out that there's two issues and then there's two sub-issues. Two issues is the enterprise fund and then the OO1 or OO2 funds. And predominantly, this is OO1, so it would be not inclusive of the OO2 Federal Reserve. And then within each of those, you have capital improvements and you have repair and replacement improvements. The OO1 capital and the OO1 repair and replacement are all funded by our assessment. And that's the stuff that Russ will be working on. Everything else is on our enterprise fund, which is covered by rates, whether it be the water rate, sewer rate, or the reuse rate. So those will be covered on that. The first one of these I prepared months ago was when 2018 was still here in the budget. And so a lot of Chris's notes and highlighted are all dark, represent that he has omitted the 2018 items out and we're only dealing with 2019, 2020, 21, 22, and 23. So that's a little bit of a difference.
Now, does that mean if the 2018 has already been allocated or if we didn't allocate it, it's pushed?
It could have been a shared cost. For example, the one at the very bottom is a good example. Potable water fire hitters, this item is CIP 2019, 2019, 2023, 25K a year, $125. I had it at $195,000, so obviously $70,000 was in the 2018 budget. Already spent.
So either we absorbed some of it or we didn't count for it and that amount would need to be pushed to 2019 because we did not start it.
That is correct. When I first started this, I limited it to totally what we approved in the 2019 budget for both OO1 and enterprise, for, again, repair and replacement and capital. Since initiating this, things have come up. We've had problems in the community and issues that we have talked about historically in the past that need to be added. They may have a low priority to some, they may have a high priority to others. But what I did is the set that I sent out to Chris to send out to all of you, and I don't know if, Chris, did they get the one I sent you that had the bold of the difference between the ones that were added after the fact?
No, we have one set in the workbook and today is really that initial October 4 memorandum.
Okay, I sent another one after revised, October 23, to you that had the dark notes on it. That, well, let me just go through it and we'll say time. Number three, if you just want to circle these, these are ones that were added that were not in the original nor included in the 2019 budget.
Replacement of irrigation system, is that number three?
Number three, flow cleaning and rate reconstruction.
These are additions, Chris.
Yeah, I hope you're looking at this one, Bill's. Yeah. Yeah, right in the middle of the page, see, repair, replacement, capital.
Oh, okay.
Number three, flowway cleaning and reconstruction were not in our original budget, 2019. Number five, lake bank erosion reconstruction was not in our original project. Number seven, gateway pond bathymetric study soil testing, pond aeration and dredging was not included. Number nine, park improvements was not included. Number 10, street light replacement, LED was not included. Number 11, common area landscape redesign was not included. And number 12, major equipment purchases was not included. These are items that have come up in the last couple of months to which I tried to assign a dollar value. Now, some of them are tough. The park improvements, the only thing that we've had to talk about was the bocce and the pickleball and I threw a number in there. The common area landscape redesign, we've talked about this and I know the board has talked about it for at least six years, that our common area control system, controllers, the whole nine yards is falling apart. It's old. Don't have any numbers on it. I've got some budgetary numbers that I have used from when we did the same thing in Gateway Greens to try to come up with a number on that. Major equipment purchases, I identified some things that staff has talked to me about. For example, Vaccos and VAC trucks, two of the major items that we, for all practical purposes, subcontract out at a very pretty penny every time we want to turn around and do something. And they would be pieces of equipment along with selected staff that you would need to operate those that would definitely be beneficial to a utility such as the CDD. So anyway, with that differential, those that I just highlighted are ones that were not in the 2019 budget but certainly need to be discussed and especially the flowway cleaning and reconstruction and the lake bank erosion reconstruction and very possibly the pond bathymetric study soils testing, pond aeration and dredging. We've got issues.
Are you going through this one by one or what is your...
Well, I'm assuming everybody's read all this, so I was just going to open it up to questions. The ones that we've already approved on the budget, I think what we need to do now is, how are we going to pay for it? How are we going to pay for it?
Well, can you take a breath while I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
We're two months into our new fiscal year and I want Mr. Blum to tell us these figures that were in our agenda seem to state to me that we have $489,000 and change left over in the general fund OO1 that was appropriated or budgeted for fiscal 18 and not spent, that could in fact be added to the fiscal 19 budget, yes or no?
Yes, there is an agenda item towards the end of...
Yeah, I saw that, but I didn't like that at all, but that's another story.
The agenda item or where it was located?
Either one. Either way.
But the idea of the agenda item is to answer your question, is to set aside the funds in general for each of the different funds that could be used for projects that are not currently assigned to either project, committed to a contract, and could be used for... be then committed to any of these new projects independent on the fund.
Let me say, if I say it, can I, no, I understand it. In addition to what we budgeted or appropriated for fiscal 19, there is an additional $489,000 that could be additionally budgeted for these or other items that we, as we decide. And we could do it fairly properly as soon as we decide on how we're, on what the most important items are. Is that so?
If I, if I'm understanding your question in the page.
There's an exception to that. You can do this for everything that's not utility enterprise.
Right, exactly. So it really depends upon the fund, obviously.
Yeah, the general fund was 489,000 and the enterprise was 676.
Well, the 489's gotta go to the OO1 and the 686 has gotta go to the enterprise.
400, right.
Yes. The issue on the enterprise gets a little bit more complicated is that how do we split that into water, sewer, and reuse? That's a separate issue.
We wouldn't have to worry about that if we hadn't split it off at the first, but that's, that's another issue, I guess.
Yeah, but bottom line is those to go to either the repair and/or replacement and/or the CIP of the OO1 or the repair and/or replacement or the CIP in the enterprise.
That's correct.
Those are our options.
Yes.
And I would, I would be against doing anything that would do other than that. Send that money to those two places.
You'd be opposed to doing anything that would be other than what?
Sending it to those two accounts. I'd be opposed to sending it anyplace else other than those two accounts, RNR and capital. This here, I think, tells it like it is, we're hurting, we're hurting bad. Big time. We need a lot of money to solve a lot of these problems. And one that just is ongoing, doesn't go away, is this storm sewer cleaning. It's a nightmare. It's an absolute nightmare. But 489,000 would help, or whatever that number was for the OO1, would be a big step toward.